I'd like to reconvene the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, February 26, 2020, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So she's carried and we begin with board reports?
All right, so the, on February 19th, the St. Mary's Association of Student Councils had their second general assembly, and they had around 70 attending delegates total from middle and high school. And so, one of the activities that we did that I thought was really interesting was we had a bill review. So we reviewed Bill, House Bill 52, House Bill 1, Senate Bill 508, and House Bill 348. And what we did is that we had a discussion about what we liked about the bill, what we didn't like about the bill, what they think that should be changed, and all of them pertained to education, so it was very, pertained to them. And so, we just give information that we had back from them and great input on the bills, so.
Well, I attended a wonderful, wonderful event that Nagina and her friend Neelum put on. It was the Rhythm 2020. Performances by all different groups, local, other local high schools, high school over in Calvert, just different dance studios, people that took music lessons, singing. It just was amazing, very professionally done. So, it was just different, you know, from, different performances from different cultures, but I know other people would like to also speak about that, so. But I just was very, very impressed with the whole, you know, from beginning to end, and I wanted to tell you that. It was really, really nice. The other event that I went to was actually the Soil, the 67th Annual Soil Conservation District Cooperative Dinner. And the reason I'm bringing this up is I do go every year, but this year, Ms. Dorothy Birch, who is our natural resource teacher, she brought two students that are in Future Farmers of America to the dinner. And I think it's really important that they were there to see the type of things that the Soil Conservation District does. They did have, you know, some slides of things that they've accomplished in the past year, a lot of discussions on bills that are being proposed and passed. And, and really, the Soil Conservation is, it's for the state and local issues, then how they impact farmers, landowners, and residents in our area. So, I think it was just really important for them to be there to see how things are working in our area, make connections, you know, so that they could, you know, in the future, maybe even, you know, do internships and things like that. But, so that was a, it was a nice evening.
I attended the Retirement Teachers Association brunch and then luncheon following week. Just wanted to convey that Dr. Bob Abel wanted me to pass a message on to the Retirement Association, to the members of the board, and to Dr. Smith at Elm, that he greatly appreciated the work that we're doing, both in maintaining the salary, negotiated agreements, and insurance. So, he wanted everybody to know that they appreciated that. That's all.
Uh, let's see. I attended the May Board of Directors meeting this morning, this afternoon. We had two members from this Maryland State Board of Education that attended, and we talked with them for a little over an hour regarding Kerwin. I did get my point in about the, the school report card and some of the challenges that all of the districts had in ensuring that the information that was actually going to be released by MSDE was accurate. And then we also talked a lot about the state superintendent search, which is underway. So, there, there does seem to be a lot of concern that with the Kerwin bill hanging out there in the legislature and no one really knowing what's, what's going to happen with it, we might not be a very attractive state to recruit a brand-new state superintendent and drop them in, him or her, in the middle of all of this uncertainty. So, it, you know, it was, it was a good meeting. They were, they were, they didn't necessarily provide a lot of answers, but at least they did listen. So, it was very appreciated, I think, by the other members of the, of the Board of Directors, so.
Very good. I attended the Rhythm 2020, Let's Get Together and Beat Cancer. It was sponsored by Neelum Shaw and our student board member Nagina. It was a tremendous performance, performances. They were brightly colored. It was the best performance I've seen. They had the prayer dance, tap ensemble by Gracie guys and gals, vocal and piano accompaniment, a hero amongst hero, can you do the can-can, that was Ballet Caliente, Chinese umbrella dance, the Leonardtown High School Chinese Club, Stay Strong, Press On, Donald Griffin, an Indian folk dance, piano solo, a chore piece by the night and gale, St. Mary's Reichen, Reflections, acapello ensemble, ensemble, Great Mills Hornet Choir, tribute to African-American artists Tiffany Nolan and Sarah Nelson, modern to Nikaling, Chapter Con Chorus Ensemble, a healer's hope. And it also had testimonials from people who suffered from cancer and how they are able to deal with it and overcome it. And I'll give you some of the facts that were brought out, that every three minutes, someone in the United States is diagnosed with blood cancer. Blood cancers are the third-leading cancer killer of Americans. Leukemia is the most common cancer in children and teens, and in the 1960s, the five-year survival rate for the most common form of childhood leukemia was 3%. Today, the survival rate is almost 90%. So, I want to thank Nagina for being a leader among leaders. It was exceptional. It, the dancing, the choreography, the sound, the stage, the lighting was unsurpassed. Thank you for taking the lead to raise money for blood cancer. And you are truly to be congratulated, and your co-partner, Neelum, for such. And this was what the program looked like. You could see it was so professionally done. And their motto is beating cancer is in our blood. So, it was very nice. It was, and here's our program, and it was a packed audience there. It was wonderful. Thank you so much. I appreciate you and all the effort you did.
Um, I'll start by saying that it is budget season, obviously, and so, much of my focus over the last several weeks has been on that. We had a budget work session with the board. We also had our, uh, public hearing on the budget. And, and then yesterday, I attended the commissioner's budget work session. And I've said it before, I commend, I commend Mrs. McCourt and all the people in the finance department for the work that they do, their professionalism, and making certain that the board has all of the most current information that is at your fingertips. It is at our fingertips. And your recommendations to us and the way that you explain things is, is incredibly helpful. And, and I will just say, you are head and shoulders above others. So, thank you for everything that you do. Again, the professionalism is just incredible, and many thanks for that. And, and lastly, I will say, Nagina, what you all undertook was, was a huge lift, and yet, you did so gracefully and very confidently. And I wouldn't have expected anything different, but, but well done, because there were a lot of moving pieces. Over 175 students involved in performing. And whether they were from the Calverton School, or Reichen, or one of our three high schools, comprehensive high schools, it was a great event. So, thank you for inviting all of us, and I'm very pleased that I was able to attend.
And the best part was, is not only coordinating all of it leading up to, and all of the different moving pieces, and I, and, but you emceed it the whole way through, and that was lovely, and with warm words between each transitioning act. But then, the finale was your performance, which was beaut, it was beautiful. And quite vigorous dancing. And as soon as it concluded, they, you concluded your performance, had multiple incredible rounds of applause, and then turned right back around, went right back into emceeing and shepherding the event to its, to a beautiful conclusion. It was really, it was really, really, really a special night. And I'm sure it's special for all the performers. I'm sure it's exceptionally meaningful for all of the people who provided testimony and have been deeply and personally impacted by blood cancers. But so many people who were there, participating, there as, as, as audience, they, they, they're just, their hearts were full, because there's so many people coming out for a really good cause, and there's so much incredible talent and, and international cultural experience like that. That was really, that was really just an absolutely lovely night. I had the opportunity to spend a lot of time up in Annapolis. I got to testify for a little over two minutes for Kerwin after spending about seven hours there, and my mic cut off in the middle of it. I'm starting to develop a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of a syndrome about that. Also came up and testified for two bills that Senator Bailey has introduced, both on behalf of the school system. One to talk about the, the sub-sub pay, and the other to reinstitute the ability of our school resource officers to write citations for tobacco and vaping violations in our school. When they raised the age to 21 to purchase, they removed from the bill the actual law that allowed them to write a citation to a minor for possessing a tobacco or vape product. So, both very interesting, and driving back and forth up to Annapolis, we, we do it often, and it's, it's quite a drive, and, and it's really quite, it's really quite an experience. And that's the next phase. So, you've all gotten together to talk about bills. We need to get you up there to see testifying and, and all of that.
Good advocacy day coming up on March 12th. So, we'll be going up there.
Oh, yes. I do know that, because Mrs. Gallo from Chapter Con is arranging it.
That is awesome. So, the voice of Southern Maryland is strong.
You should go with them.
I'm probably gonna be there, so who knows?
You just drop on in. You have a desk now.
Yeah, well, yeah, well.
As a therapy dog.
Right, the therapy dog. It was really quite lovely. Doing a whole bunch of classroom visits, so in between that, getting out to Leonardtown Middle School, Oakville, Great Mills, Esperanza Middle Ridge. I'm a, I'm about a third of the way through all the schools, recognizing the incredible nominees each school has put forward for the Teacher of the Year, the Education Support Professional of the Year, and then touching base with our 120 now, new teachers who are all doing incredible work out in our schools. That's been so much fun. I do want to, as a preview, next week, we, next, next week, we start the freshman, Rising Freshman Orientation Nights. And this year, we have incorporated all of our Slack kids into discussions about how best to make those nights really meaningful. And some of our leaders from Slack are actually going to be presenting those nights. So, we have, before we meet again, March 9th is Great Mills High School, and Leonardtown is March 11th. So, we'll get to report back to you when we come together about how wonderful all those things are. And then the last is, I want to recognize somebody who was there on Saturday night and is there for everything, Mr. Todd Burrows, who is our supervisor of Fine Arts, is the 2020 recipient of the Maryland Music Educators Association Kerwin Taylor Music Education Leadership Award. So, throughout the entire state of Maryland, he is being recognized for that. He's going to be honored at the MMEA Awards for Excellence on March 13th up at the Baltimore Convention Center. And he's so incredibly deserving, both the, the Burrows Dynamo, because his wife is also a music teacher at Benjamin Banneker Elementary School. It's really, the arts are alive and well in St. Mary's County, and we saw it on Saturday night, and we see it in all of these different aspects. So, it's been a joy and a pleasure, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, then we will roll right into recognitions. Dr. Moore? Are you tapping?
It is therapeutic. It is probably also annoying to others.
Thank you all. Tonight, we recognize exemplary teachers who have gone beyond the expectations of their positions. Several years ago, in fact, over 30 years ago, the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards was established as the profession's vehicle for defining and recognizing the high standards of teaching. The process is an extensive process, that of National Board certification, involving performance-based assessments, which include teacher portfolios, student work samples, videotapes, and thorough analysis of the candidate's classroom teaching and student learning. So, the National Board certification process is a demonstration of the teaching practice as measured against these high and rigorous standards. National Board is not something you take on lightly. It is also a volunteer process. It is an advanced system of certification that complements but does not replace state licensing. Recognizes the gold standard in teaching certification, only 3% of teachers nationwide have earned this certification. In St. Mary's County Public Schools, we have 39, and we add one to those ranks tonight. So, we're at about 4%. The Maryland State Department of Education and St. Mary's County Public Schools support this program, and we are so proud to recognize our National Board certified teachers. I'd like to invite Dr. Smith to the podium to join me, as we also call these teachers forward to be recognized. First, the board recognizes the following teacher for her exceptional accomplishment of having achieved National Board certification, Ms. Brooke Fallon from Leonardtown High School.
Congratulations. Very well done. You received first the certificate, and then also.
And additionally, teachers can apply to be recertified for National Board certification, and the following teacher has received that recertification of her National Board status, Ms. Emily Many from Leonardtown High School as well. And while they're receiving those, I would just want to give a special thanks to Ms. Colleen Gill, Mr. Brian Rose, and Ms. Rachel Sparks, who have supported them throughout the year in this process. With that, Dr. Smith, do you have any words?
So, within the Kerwin Commission, it's very much centered on the professionalization of the, of the teaching profession, and I would argue that it's already one of the most professional occupations that anyone can hold. But specific, there's a great deal of reference to a career ladder, and specifically, one of the major components of that career ladder is the earning of National Board certification. So, as our two wonderful teachers came in, I said I was going to put them on the spot. If they could share just a little bit about, first, the process to become nationally board certified, and then the continuation of that, to continue and recertify and hold that. So, with that, if that's okay, I would ask Ms. Fallon to come over and take a few moments.
So, the process for Emily might be slightly different than it was for me, because it's changed over the years. The first time I did it, or a few years ago when I looked into it, I was getting my master's at the Citadel, and I said, oh, I need that, because I'm a military wife, and I'm going to move around the country, so I'd like to have National Board. Didn't, I ended up in St. Mary's County. I'm fine. I'm going to be here a long time. But, and so I didn't really need to move about the country. However, I, it was a goal back in the late 1990s. I said, I'm going to get my National Board. It just took this much time to really get to that point to really do it, because it takes a lot out of you when you do it. There are four components. One is test, which you go take a test, right? And then you have to go to a secure testing site, and you have to wear special glasses, and you have to put your palm in a sensor to make sure that you're not cheating, and in a secure room, and all of these kinds of things. So, it was kind of intense as far as that was concerned for security reasons, testing. The other three components, 2, 3, 4, you essentially prove yourself as a teacher. And that's what, you, you write 12-page papers. They don't let you write one word more, one page more than exactly that, and they tell you exactly how to set it up. But if you don't use the right wording that they need to see, you'll get a score that makes you do it again, which happened to me the first time. So, the first time through, everything was great. I missed it by point one, and I probably could have just redone one essay question on the test, and I said, no, I better do one component. Don't want to put all my eggs in one basket. So, I had to redo a component about, I think it was the professional development one, where you have to prove that professional development that you do is then actually affecting the children that you teach. And so, I redid that one, and I passed, and I'm very happy about that. But it was a, it's one of those life goals types of things. So, I am very interested in the Kerwin Commission's proposal to ensure that every teacher goes National Board, because if you were to ask my colleagues right now if they want to do that, they're like, that's crazy. Honestly, because it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. So, National Board, however, is, they've already pinged me numerous times with calls and emails encouraging me to spread the word. And most recently, I got an email saying, okay, spread the word to three people. And they, I had to share, I decided to share, I didn't have to, share emails of three people who are my peers at work, who might be the types of people who would be interested in doing it. So, they're also working to have other people consider doing it. What I think is fabulous is that St. Mary's County Public Schools is very supportive of this process. I was able to get three grad credits for the process, and also, the cost of doing it is $47, $475 a component, I believe, was all reimbursed with our tuition reimbursement, and which is something Colleen worked for, for us. And I honestly may not have done it otherwise, because certainly that's a lot of work and a lot of money. And granted, we then get some money, which is fabulous. So, that was an incentive as well. So, I appreciate having that from the state and from the school board. So, I hope I didn't talk too long.
No, no, that's great. You are well ahead of the curve. There you go.
Thank you.
Want to talk a little bit about renewal?
About renewal? Sure. And so, it is a really time-consuming process to achieve the first time. I was reminded that we had massive snowstorms 10 years ago, and that's how I was able to sit down and do so much of mine. And it does change a little bit based on content. So, for renewal, I was really glad I didn't have to go back to the testing center and do it again, because I'm science certified. So, I had to relearn a lot of the science that I don't teach on a regular basis, because it's all branches of science. So, for the renewal process, you go back, and for me, it was 10 years. It's now five years for renewal. And you go through everything you've done over the last 10 years, and you try to find, well, what are my four professional growth experiences that I really want to focus in on? And finding four things out of 10 years is really daunting. Then you write it up, you videotape lessons that corroborate with that evidence that you have. You can collect paper evidence or videotape from one of your other ones. You put it all together, and you ask Colleen Gill to help you proofread it, and she teaches you how to take out the word "the," because you can lose a whole page if you take out the word "the." And you submit, and cross your fingers and hope for the best. And it's a long process, but it's not as arduous as the first time around. What I would recommend, though, is keep track of your things, because going back through was, that was the hardest part, and trying to narrow it down, because it's very open-ended for renewal. It's very much, are you continuing to show these leadership qualities? Are you a teacher leader? Are you involving the community? Are you meeting the expectations of the National Board?
Thank you. Just, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
I do not have anyone sign in tonight.
Okay. All right. Then, may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move.
Approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the approval of minutes of February 12th and February 19th, 2020, personnel, teachers, and Department of Maintenance Utility Van Replacement.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have one action item, which Mrs. Allen did allude to, which is the approval of the fiscal year 2021 budget.
So, if, so if you were to, if you were to sneak out, or we wouldn't, we would take no offense. We recognize that it is indeed a school.
I thought you were removing Tammy to sit down. I was like.
No, no, it is indeed a school night.
Tammy's not presenting this, Scotty?
Very much. See?
I shouldn't take offense to that, correct?
What are you doing? You're shooing Tammy away?
No. Well, no, they're exceptionally, they're very, they would, they would stay all the way to the end, and I know that they have a great deal of work to do.
Hopefully, the end is near. I'm just kidding.
Well, the first step is near with regard to the budget, because this evening, you'll be approving the budget so that you can send it over for the county commissioner's approval and consideration. So, I'd like to back up to where we started. When we started the budget process, we submitted to you for your consideration a budget of $234.5 million, representing a $12.5 million increase or 5.6%. At that time, we anticipated receiving $3.2 million increase in state revenues. That did not materialize. Therefore, we shifted that request to the county commissioner's funding line, and so that line went from $7.6 million to $9.3 million. However, that's a very large ask. So, last week, during your budget session, you requested us to go back and entertain some changes to the budget, and the discussion led to a reduction of $2 million to the bottom line of the budget. So, now, the new request is $232.6 million, representing a $10.5 million increase to the bottom line of the budget or 4.6%. So, the change is on the county commissioner's request of funding from $106.2 million to $113.6 million, or a $7.3 million increase. So, at this time, I ask if you have any questions for me before we finalize this for your approval. Nope.
Not for me. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think so. And we've also provided you lots of reading, the formal
budget document, which will be posted to our website and provided to the county commissioners tomorrow, as well as the county commissioners' ECC sheets, the essential cost sheets, totaled back to the $7.3 million that we're requesting, as well as all of the budget changes that have taken place over the past two weeks.
And just to clarify, with the, the essential cost changes form that we send over, those are the county government's way of tracking expenses year to year, and changes that are being made, or increases to particular things that are going forward for them for their consideration. They will have all of this information, and they have all the PowerPoints, and they have all of that. But more often than not, when they really get down to their budget work session, they're looking at their essential cost changes form. So, the forms that you see in front of you, we, there are only four forms this year. The first one represents $5.4 million. It's, so it's, those plan, it's this one. The first form is just for negotiated agreements and incremental costs. So, that is what we, that is employee compensation and health insurance particularly. We do, the, it's then broken down by category as to where the employee is and where the cost is carried. So, that's $5.4 million of the $7.3. The next ECC form is for transportation, and that's for the proposed increase for drivers and for attendance, as well as increases in operations fees, maintenance fees, fuel allotment, stipends, PVA increase, and the healthcare trust, and that's a million dollars. And then the last is the enhancements that we've been discussing, and really, if you remember from our last work session, we've pared this down to special education teachers and paraeducators, an additional school nurse, and the safety and security assistants, and the information technology specialists associated with some of the technologies that we're bringing in. And that, prorated as they would come on, and that's a million dollars. The last form is for, last of the ECCs is for just one-time funding for their consideration to be used out of their fund balance. And that is And that is for technology, and a lot of it backend technology that people don't necessarily see. Network security, network core and transceivers, firewall replacement, as well as things that you'd see in the classroom, interactive televisions, and some of the, taking offline of some of the laptops that are reaching end of their usable life and moving to Windows ten platform devices. So that's, of all of this that we do, ultimately, the commissioners really, their cover sheet are these four forums. Now, all the additional information is all behind it, but that's basically where we start.
Okay.
All right. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended budget for FY twenty-twenty-one as presented and forward to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their review and approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to Ms. McCord and thank you to Karen Breisler, who's there in the back, who keeps, who models out all of this. When we say, well, I don't know, what does that cost? Somebody has to go back and model that all out, and that is you. And thank you for your tireless work. It is appreciated very much. Thank you.
All right. Now we have Dr. Montgomery and Dr. Jaffers.
It's here.
No?
It's here.
Okay. Possibly shortest PowerPoint that they've ever presented.
You notice how every time Dr. Jaffers presents, I'm here with him. I'm here to.
Your lucky day, right? It's every's lucky day, you know?
Complimentary presenter.
He keeps adding me the front slide every time he's presenting. My name gets added.
It actually worked.
Before it was fine.
Mine doesn't.
No.
Really?
I think if you turn to your computer and go back. Yeah, it's correct now. It depends, it's how it cached. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a problem with Google Chrome. So I printed out, I have a printout.
We're all good. I got you. I'm just happy Dr. Jaffers has time to add my slide.
That's why we have hard copies. We're not being very, very friendly.
We aim to please here. We aim to please. So we're, we're here tonight, good evening. We're here to talk about the unembargoed data that was just released from MSD yesterday, which is our graduation rate for twenty-nineteen, our four-year cohort. And this is just a simple slide as to how we would calculate the four-year graduation rate. The numerator is basically everybody that actually makes across the stage in four years. And that's divided by all the students that actually initiate their experience at the same time. And we subtract out a few transfers and we, and we add in those that come into St. Mary's County from different schools. This is more of a visual, the same thing. Again, the minute that you start ninth grade, the clock ticks. You have to finish in four years. And so that's what we're going to talk about tonight, the four-year graduation rate of those, of those students that began their career in St. Mary's County August twenty-fifteen. So as you can see, we have a time, you know, over twenty, since twenty-eleven up, up through last year, twenty-nineteen, we ended up with a ninety-four-point-three-three percent graduation rate for all of our students. Dipped slightly from twenty-eighteen. Nonetheless, it was, the trajectory and the trend is still our friend. It's still up and, and up and away, if you will. Again, as we get closer to that hundred percent, we're hitting that asymptotic plateau where it's hard to ever get a hundred percent. We're getting close. As we disaggregate the data, we have, you know, we took a bit of a, again, negligible dip in our farm economically disadvantaged number. We went from eighty-eight-point-three percent of students last year to eighty-seven-point-three-two percent this past year. Our African-American went from ninety-two-point-one-four, dropped slightly to ninety-one-point-four-six. Still ninety percent of our students that are African-American graduate in four years. And, and here is the aggregate twenty-nineteen graduation rates for all four of our schools juxtaposed against the county and juxtaposed against the state of Maryland. So we'll just, again, we should applaud, we're all in, we're in the ninety, ninety percent of our kids, over ninety percent of our kids are graduating in four years. And we are outperforming the state, which is always important, so.
Nice question.
Please.
On the four-year graduation rate, you know how some of the classes have a bubble, you know, of students as they move through with like, I think, you know, with my son's class, I think there's like an extra hundred kids that what didn't have before. So that, that would somewhat also impact your percentages, correct?
Possibly, yes.
So depending on what the.
Roll numbers?
On what the roll numbers were between the graduating class of twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen.
Absolutely.
There, there were thirty-two more kids in the class of two thousand nineteen than there were in the class of two thousand eighteen.
So not that much, but as, as we get to that bubble that I knew was filtering through, it, it, it could have more of an impact.
How do we stand between the joining counties?
Just keep.
It's the last slide. That's the last slide.
I say the best for last.
That's the, that's the big end.
But we're not going to skip through.
I mean, we're, we're almost eight, we're almost eight percent above Maryland state average. And Maryland has one of the highest on-time graduation rates in the United States. So, so when I hear somebody say that only a third of our kids are college and career-ready and that whatever they report for dropouts, what have you, that may be true some places. That is not true in St. Mary's County. In St. Mary's County, since going back to the slide before, since two thousand and fourteen, and I've had the joy to be with you, we have been well over ninety percent consistently ever since, you know, and that's, that's, we're really, that's really, really, really hard work. And we're really, really proud of the results of all of that hard work.
Absolutely. That's.
We are.
So as we start to disaggregate the data by school, you can see here's Choptikon, class of twenty-nineteen. The disaggregated groups are on the left. And we have the red, the blue, and the sort of the gray lines are the trend data since two thousand and eleven as well. And you can see, again, the trend is our friend. We are gradually moving all of our cohorts in subgroups to over ninety percent or close to ninety percent, which is always a big success. And we had, we had a lot of really good success at Choptikon High School last year with regards to our special education students. We saw a big bump in our, in our graduation rate for that cohort.
And, and also keep in mind, this is on-time graduation rate for special education, not five-year. And actually, special ed students can have up to seven years to graduate from high school.
That's right. Leonardtown's data is, it looks just as solid, again. A lot of really positive trends in the data. Most of our subgroups in Leonardtown are over ninety percent or close to ninety percent as well. And as we move to Great Mills, again, we are approaching, looks like we've continued the ascent also with Great Mills. And again, all, all three of the cohorts that are on the, on the, on the map today are over or at least close to ninety percent. So we have to feel very good, ultimately, in culminating at a ninety-two-point-nine-nine percent of graduation on time for a year, which is fantastic. It's a very good, a very good success.
And if you could go back to the Leonardtown High School and, and for Choptikon as well, we'll stay on Leonardtown. The reason why we set it up like this was because the questions you always ask me are, we'll disaggregate the data. There's the disaggregated data. Well, give me the trend. There's the trend. Well, give me the, the size of each one of this disaggregated group, because that makes a great difference. So for the Leonardtown, we see African-Americans dipping down to ninety-one-point-four-three percent. And I know some people would then report that as a decline. But recognize there are only thirty-five students in that cohort and thirty-two graduated on time. If thirty-three had graduated, one more student, there isn't a gap. And the same thing for free and reduced meals. We have forty-two out of forty-eight. If, I think it's four students out of that group or two students, the, the gap is just a handful of students. And why is that important? Because that's how our schools are going about their work. They're, they don't admire the data. They don't simply report the data. They, they can, they identify the, the individual students, the one student, two students, the three students that are doing that work. And if they don't show up in the four-year cohort, I can tell you that they are absolutely committed to having those students show up in the five-year cohort. We don't give up on anyone.
Yeah, that's a very important point there, Dr. Smith, because I think now that we see the one or two, three kids that did not make it across the stage, our people are going to go out and try to find and shake the trees to try to get these kids to do what they have to do to, to get over the, the expectation of graduation. So, and ultimately, here is the, what was asked before with regards to our, our performance against our geographical neighbors, Calvert-Chris and St. Mary's, against, you know, Maryland, if you will. And again, Charles, they did a great job, ninety-four-point-six percent, they're leading the trend. We actually come in close second at ninety-four-point-three-three percent. And Calvert is right behind us at ninety-four-point-one-two. So again, a lot of, a lot of really good success for our geographical neighbors here.
Overall supporting mechanisms. So performance matters, you know, you, you've heard about performance matters. We've done a, we've done a presentation on what that brings to the system and the data. But I wanted to just talk a little bit about what we just did on Monday of this week. We brought all the school teams in to do a mid-year data unpack. So all the principals came in with teachers and IRTs and assistant principals, you know, different people that they have on their team, to take all the performance matters data that we have from the mid-year to start looking at what are our deficit standards? How do we need to focus the rest of the year on teaching? And not teaching just to prepare for MCAP, but teaching the deficit standards and keeping instruction the same and using our data. And that's what Performance Matters has allowed us to do. And I, I thank Dr. Jaffers and Ms. Bachner and the supervisors for all of the work that they did to prepare, to bring in so that we had all the school teams in on one day and just had that professional development. And, and it was, it was, it was phenomenal. It was a great collaboration. And Performance Matters, it's just such a part of our culture and what we do in all of our schools to analyze our data. It's a really great tool. I'm going to skip down to the, the third bullet that talks about the system-wide professional development. And that's what I mean with the example about how targeted it is. And it is completely focused on data. We're not all over the place with different initiatives. You hear Performance Matters over and over again. You hear our targeted work. You heard it. You, you hear us talking about goal book and pathways and universal design for learning, all the same. And we, we've not changed over the years. We've just gotten stronger in delivering and using those systems. Grade recovery and learning opportu, learning options. We had Apex and Apex served its purpose in the years that we had Apex. And we've transitioned to Edge Annuity, and it is a more robust platform for sure. And so our, our teachers are using that. We're using that in evening high school. We're using that for credit, recovery. We're using that for original credit. So another way, when a, a student needs an online learning experience, we're using it with home hospital students as well. That's, that's been a, an excellent platform for us also. Family involvement. I do want to take a moment to reference attendance. A majority of the students that we have that are not succeeding with us and that are not graduating in four years, we look at their data and we have attendance concerns with those students. So if you come to school, we're going to find a way. We're going to look at your data. We're going to identify deficit standards. We're going to figure out what you need. And we are going to help you and support you and, and support a student to get across the line. If you're not coming to school, we have a, a hard time helping you and being able to do something with that. So emphasis on family involvement. We have HAC, we have NAVIANS, we have multiple opportunities to stay involved with families and keeping families informed. And we really need kids to come to school. So any parent that's out there listening, if your child's missing school, send them to school unless they're sick. So individualized programs, evening high school, Fairlead, Life Skills, Life Skills to Support Special Education Students. And the addition to that is our freshman seminar, which we added this year. And I put that up there so that you all understood and the community understood that freshman seminar is, we're, we're identifying kids in middle school that could potentially be at risk coming to high school. We're putting supports in place for them in ninth grade. And the whole purpose of freshman seminar is that they earn enough credits to become sophomores. And so because if they make it through their freshman year, that's the hardest hill for them to climb. So we put a great deal of emphasis on that. Each one of our high schools is running two sections of freshman seminar this year. We handpick the teachers of who's working with those kids and we, you know, we'll work, we continue to work on that. And strong instructional leadership. I have to thank Dr. Hybel, Ms. Mills, Ms. Summers, the counselors at the school, the teachers at the school, the leadership and the philosophy of our three high school principals. It permeates the schools. And they are extremely data-driven, always child-centered, and incredibly persistent. They don't give up on, on children. They have a philosophy and a belief in children. It permeates their schools and then it yields the results that we get in St. Mary's County, so.
And I do, just to add on to this, I think, you know, we have three departments that are working hard together. It's Maureen, she oversees all the schools. Our department oversees the data. And Lisa Bachner oversees the curriculum and the, and we have, we have a great synergy here amongst all, because we can't do it all alone. You know, Maureen can't do it all alone. I can't do it all alone. And Lisa can't. So the three of us come together. We work hard to synergize all this, unpack of the data. And when we talk about data, we, we fall into the trap of thinking about, it's always tests. It's not always about tests. What Maureen said, it's about the ABCs, it's attendance, it's behavior, and course failure. And Performance Matters captures all that data. It's a data repository that we can track this culture and climate data to juxtapose against the student performance. And it's a powerful, like, we talk about data profile. We can project in sixth grade who's not going to pass in twelfth grade six years from now, based on the power of the projection and the group, the regression analysis. It's, it's very simple. It's very straightforward when you look at it in, in total. So it's, kudos to everybody here that has supplied the tools that we can, that we have at our disposal to be successful, so.
All right. Well, here, I'm going to, I'm going to just continue to jump on with your metrics, which I know you'll probably really enjoy. So if you look at the four-year graduation rate that started out in two thousand and eleven and then primarily in two thousand and fourteen, I, I know we all kind of joke and laugh when Scott gets up there and says, you know, we're committed to our students and our staff and our people and we're going to put money in our people. Um, you know, because that's kind of his mantra. But very clearly, if you look at what was done prior to his tenure here, right, where the, and I'm not speaking as a board member, I'm speaking as a parent in schools, where I don't, the feeling out there was that the money didn't necessarily always go to the classrooms and go to the students and in support of the students, right? It went to other specific places based on whatever was, you know, the trendy thing at the moment. And then once that turned, then you saw the improvement, not only in the overall graduation rate, but specifically with all of the concentration and discussion on equity. You see it in the farm students and the African-American population that clearly was not there before, twenty-fourteen. I mean, if, if you look, if you look across at the numbers, I mean, it's, they're, they're somewhat abysmal. You know, if, if that's what, you know, we were, if, you know, if, because we didn't have those supports in place. Through no fault of anyone here, we just didn't have these things that we were committed to, both money-wise and I think maybe the buy-in of everyone that was in the system. So I think that all of this work is, is huge, you know, hats off, kudos, whatever, you know, phrase you want to use to the staff that is in place now and the development that has been happening over the past several years in order to get us to this place. And I think we, we might see it level off, right? And, and at that point, you know, there's a lot of school systems in the state that, that, that can't say this. So, you know, now it's just, it's, as Scott mentioned, it's one or two children. It's not, it's not groups of or sections of children that are struggling. It's one or two. So based on all of the supports that we do have in place.
I think, I think you can also look at the fact that between twenty-eleven and, and twenty-fourteen, fifteen, that was a pretty heavy lift through that time.
Right. Oh, absolutely. Right.
And so there was a lot of work that went on then that I think has, has gone on to pay dividends. I think it's fine-tuning. I, I think it really is, is, is that Dr. Smith has really worked to fine-tune so that we're not losing kids. This is not just a one and done. You've been able to demonstrate consistency with this and not just with looking at the entire group, but when you start to, to really look at the disaggregated data and the improvements that have been made in, in the groups, I think it's pretty significant. And as Dr. Smith started by saying, there may be some places in the state that, and clearly there are, that don't look like this. But you have utilized the resources provided and, and found a way to leverage them to, on the behalf of students. And for that, I think the entire system is to be.
Laser sharp focus. Laser sharp.
It is.
We're sustaining.
So for the record, I was involved in all the, in all the, in all the other stuff down here too. So we were, it was a heavy lift. We were, when we first calculated the actual on-time adjusted cohort rate, it was in the seventies. It was a different way of looking at the data. And, and we had to then go back and, and reorganize all of that. So we had quite a trajectory year. So, we had quite a trajectory year over year. And I'll remember the year, two thousand and thirteen, when we hit ninety-one percent, the first time we had been over ninety percent since the new rate, and with Dr. Martirano, we all celebrated. We had pins. We were like, ask us about our ninety-one point five percent. We were extremely excited, and so, to continue to build on that and carry that over, I will also tell you, this board, you as a board have made real decisions about investing in classroom materials and textbook adoptions. You know, we have, in the last six years, we have updated every single one of our major textbooks and programs in each one of the schools, and, you know, that's a testament to good people. All the people who are here, we've also been here for a really long time.
Well, Dr. Jaffers was the math supervisor during those years, and I was the principal of Leonardtown High School. I started in two thousand and eleven there, so we all had a...
Oh, my gosh, and you, yeah, and you introduced the competitive, you know, absolutely, positively outperforming each one of them. And we'll go, the other slide going back there is Southern Maryland as an area, to have three counties next to each other all hitting at ninety-four percent, that's fantastic. And each county has its own, you know, powerhouse strength and challenge, and, you know, makes me very proud to live in the Southern Maryland area to see, to see all three of the school systems standing like that. We are definitely a concentration of some of the very best educators engaged in working with kids, so.
Imagine what would happen if the rest of the state listened to us.
Sometimes you have to take care of Southern Maryland.
Maybe they should just leave us alone.
Sometimes Southern Maryland's right.
Just let us do what we wanna do.
But accolades, we were very excited about our rate and our continued rate, and we're like, well, how do we do next to our neighbors? And then we looked, and we're like, oh, my gosh, they're doing great too, and that's great.
I think a lot of that too is also, I mean, the area, I mean, just being up at Maeve today, and you hear about people on the eastern shore, I mean, you know, they, like, we are very close to a metropolitan area where, you know, there are a lot of people that live here and commute to DC and to those jobs on a daily basis. So, you know, they, you know, they're invested, whereas, you know, on, you know, far west and, you know, eastern shore, there's, they don't have that, right.
We still have one-third of our children living in poverty. So, one out of three of our children lives in poverty, and faces all the challenges of living in poverty. And that is our most persistent group to make an absolute consistent year-to-year growth. That really is, that's a real challenge, because there are so many factors that lie outside of the school that impact progress through high school. There's just so many things that go on.
But we don't use it as an excuse.
We never use it as an excuse, absolutely not.
It's a reason, not an excuse.
It is not an excuse. And it's been a saying that it takes a village to raise a child, but it also takes a village to educate a child. Many people are responsible for these numbers and the success of our students. The people, our administrators, faculty and staff, parents and the family support, student mentors, volunteer, community partners, our funding agents, and the Board of Education, and the superintendent.
Yep.
Also, we have robust programs and support systems in place to help students. The philosophy of our school system with a laser focus on students, schools, and stakeholders. Our various department, HR, who hires some of the best, well, they don't hire, but they select the best educators, administrators possible, our Supporting Services Department, they make sure everything works, our buildings are clean and orderly, our food and nutrition service workers. Hungry children cannot learn, they make sure our children get a nutritious meal, and they do it with a smile. Also, finance, Mrs. McCourt and her team, make sure all the numbers are coming together. Yes, transportation, we couldn't do it if the students couldn't get here. Dr. Walker and his team, our IT department, with all the things that we have to help students to learn and to keep everything going. And so, we have an effort on continuous improvement in our school system. So, this county is a county that works collaboratively together. Everybody's on board. When I visit schools, building service workers, they're on board. Food and nutrition workers are on board, administrator, parents, nurses, IRTs. Everybody in the school system is on board, and it's all about the students. The students are number one, because the students are the future. So, I wanna thank everyone to help us to get where we are. And it's a wonderful county to live, work, and raise a family. It used to be a secret, but the word is getting out how the Southern Maryland region is strong. And we work together down here for the students, and that's why we are here. The board members, superintendent, and all of us is about the future, and the future is in the classroom. It's the students, and we had it laser-focused. So, all of us work together. We have our student board member who give us input on the students and their thoughts. She's out here working, excellent student, raising money, state leader. So, I wanna thank everybody, because it takes all of us working together. And the superintendent for making sure we have a team that works together.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, and I got a good team.
We cut Jimmy off like ten minutes ago.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
I forgot what I was... No, I haven't forgotten. We've already talked about free, reduced lunches. It's telling me that even though the numbers are pretty close, we need to do some more work on economics as opposed to ethnic or other issues, that that's an issue. So, my question is, you mentioned earlier about talking to the parents. Could you embellish on that? How do you reach out to them?
So, we, aside from the usual parent information nights that we have that people can participate in, if we have a student that is not doing what they need to do, then we involve them right away. And so, they get an interim report, and then they get a report card. So, every nine weeks, they're communicated with officially about where their kids stand in high school. And so, the parents are brought into it right away. We have the Home Access Center, that any parent can have their child's password and look at every single day their published classwork and where their kids are standing. The Naviance Parents Presentation, that allows them to get another view of their child's record. And they can always schedule any kind, any time to meet with a counselor, or a teacher, or an administrator to work with them about their child. So, we welcome parents in the school to be our partners. It works better for the child if school and the parents are partnering together. I think one of the hardest things for people to understand is that we do have one in three children in this school system living in poverty. I received a call from a member of our delegation questioning that number. He just couldn't believe it, and I said, nope, that is absolutely correct. And so, that is a surprise to people, because they consider this to be a fairly affluent area. And there is some affluence, but there's also a great deal of poverty.
And I wanna add also that we try to catch them when they're young, Jim, because in early childhood education, there are trainings that are going on for parents who may not know how to be an effective parent. We have conscious discipline classes that are going on, they are free, they are open to anyone, and we catch the students early. So, it's all kind of programs that we have, we have safety and security programs, where we have people coming in, talking about students making choices. They talk to the students in the schools about making good choices. They had, well, right now, they have a lady and her son, who are visiting all the high schools, talking about a choice that her son made, where he and some guys broke in someone's house, and he was shot. So, they are talking to the students about making good decisions, how things can impact your life in a negative way. They had one on suicide prevention for our students. And I went into that session, and they had all these large photos.
No, keep going, because I do have one.
Okay, beautiful kids, huge photos of them, probably about four feet by four feet. And all those kids have committed suicide. So, we have mental health professionals, we have nurses, counselors, and we have everything that we can, and we do so much down here to educate the whole child and to help the parents to be up to date on the latest and greatest things in child rearing, discipline, being an effective parent, how to have an effective parent-teacher conference. There's so many things that we do in the school system, and I know a lot of them I don't know about. I know the superintendent could just go on and on.
We have an upcoming town hall next month, it's all with the Health Department on March sixteenth. It's all gonna be the Useless Behavior Survey, where we talk about all of those things that impact the lives of our children. We're gonna talk specifically about mental health and all of that. So, again, that's one of the ways that we are very proactive, as much as we possibly can, to get messaging out and try to help before students really struggle.
I think the one interesting thing, if you look at CHOPCON, to Jim's point, with the free and reduced meals, typically, there are not as many services in the central and northern end of the county for those children who are living in poverty. A lot of it is centered down in the, you know, in the southern part of the county. So, that's probably a challenge that everyone has, because, just because you are, you know, at a school that only has, you know, fifteen percent farms, doesn't mean that if you are one of those students that you should not, you know, have services available to you. But yet, you know, the mindset is to get to as many children as possible. But yet, sometimes I think we forget about the kids that are elsewhere, that still have the same challenges, but they don't have, you know, the bag lunch program, or they don't, you know, they don't have those things available to them, so.
A constituent asked me a year or so ago, what percentage of the payroll is in front of the class, teachers in front of a classroom, as opposed to support? And Mrs. McCourt, I believe, told me, I'm going by memory, but fifty-three percent of the payroll was being paid for teachers that are in front of the classroom. So, forty-seven percent is in support services and all the things that the board's been talking about.
I don't think that's a correct figure.
Well, that's a figure I got. But don't argue the, you know, the data may be different, but it's a substantial amount of money. I'm just echoing what they're saying, that the world's different than it was when I was in school. If you wanted milk and cookies, you brought your thirty-five cents in, and you got your milk and cookies. If you didn't bring it in, you didn't get your milk and cookies, and you brought your own lunch in. So, things have changed in the last fifty, sixty years, and I support what's being done. We don't want a hungry child being taught. We want to do whatever we can. All the support services, I think, is very important. So, that's what I explained to this constituent, who was somewhat skeptical on the amount of money that we're spending, you know, in our schools.
I do wanna just, just to answer your point more explicitly, we always go big to small. So, we have all this big data here, but ultimately, it comes down to the small data points, and that's where the teacher's relationship with the student, it's the most positive correlation, and that's what trends here in this data. Maureen gets a list in October, we get a list beginning in October, of students that are in danger of failing for twelfth grade. We get another list in January, we get another list in February. And we get lists from teachers, hey, these kids haven't finished bridge, they haven't done the scoring. So, we send letters home directly to parents. So, again, when we talk about big, we have these programs, we have the wide swath, but ultimately, it comes down to the classroom teacher and the communication directly to the home, I believe, is the catalyst for change, and I think that's why we've had a lot of success over the last four or five years, so.
Mrs. Weir hasn't waited yet.
But, you know, we need those supporting services, because if we didn't, it's more than the teacher in the classroom, because if we didn't have buses, students couldn't get to school. So, how are they gonna learn? You gotta have food services, you can't have school unless students cannot eat. You have to have building service workers, because students can't go to a dirty school, because then you get diseases and all things like that. So, everybody is needed, and we need more of some of those people. They're not directly in front of the classroom, but without those important employees, we could not have school.
Well, if not us, then whom? The thing is, the need's the need. The need's the need, a child presents themselves, and they have need, and if not us, then whom?
That's right.
I just was looking back at Mrs. McCourt, and so, when he was quoting that figure, I gathered from her facial expressions that we probably want to look for an updated comment on that, because it's much more than fifty-three percent.
Oh, no, no, and actually, that's part of the ESSA calculation where they want, so, ESSA is the federal government and the state of Maryland, and ultimately, Kerwin...
You are ruining our graduation, talking about ESSA.
Right, well, they wanna find out exactly, they wanna find out exactly how much money is spent in the classroom, and those calculations will be forthcoming, and that is, I mean, that's one of the accountability pieces that everybody wants to...
The number is ninety-four point three-three, don't ruin it with ESSA.
Well, that's why, that's why when we first broke ninety, we all had buttons, because we could laser-focus on what was most important, was like, see my button? And everybody wanted to talk about it, I said, see the button, maybe we need to have buttons.
Don't ruin it with ESSA.
But I will tell you that you have...
Dr. Jaffers put together this great presentation, it was only forty-five...
Yes, he shortened the slide presentation and everything for us. You guys all got sidetracked.
I know.
You as a board have made a great many decisions.
I'll put fifty slides the next time.
Yeah.
Time for discussion.
You as a board have made a great many decisions, that all of the resources that you have brought in, all of the money and funding that has been brought into the system over the last, this is, I said, this is my second budget, it's all gone straight to the employee in compensation, or straight to the classroom for materials of instruction, or for technology.
Who led with those comments?
So, there you go. I wish we had more money. A lot of the services that we provide, outside that, we get grants, and we partner with, you know, the reason why we have social workers in all of our secondary schools is because we partner with the Department of Health. So, you know, we'll figure out a, okay, stop talking, ninety-four...
Ninety-four point three-three, you're burying the headlines, Scott, with this jabber, ninety-four point three-three.
Dear God, you've just, you've just written the headlines for Friday.
I was gonna say that, but I was just gonna say...
Don't bury it, ninety-four point three-three.
Yes.
On time.
On time.
That's right.
I'd like to see that exact same statistic applied to every other institute that educates children, higher ed in particular.
Ooh, wouldn't we all?
Show me how many people graduate on time from your major university, and before you criticize anything in public education, I'm not saying you're the chancellor, or the vice president, or the president of college or university.
Or head of a commission.
Or the head of a commission, you show me your data, and I'll show you mine, and we'll see who's better serving the population that is enrolled, so.
Very good.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone have anything else? I'm afraid to ask. All right, our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, March eleventh, at nine AM. We are adjourned.